Person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting can do so via Facebook Live. Again, this meeting is being held virtually and will be recorded and livestreamed on Facebook Live. We request that to preserve decorum. The councilors wishing to speak first raise their hand and wait for the acknowledgement by the president. Citizens wishing to speak during citizens' open forum or citizens' comments should raise their hand, and they will be unmuted by the host. And the host for tonight is our council clerk, Ian. And they will be allowed to speak in order in which the hand was raised. Citizens must state their name and address clearly for the record. Attendees who cannot adhere to the above guidelines may be put on hold by the host. It is the town of Bridgewater's intention to provide a virtual meeting environment that is respectful, productive, and informative to all. The above guidance is intended to provide the structure to achieve this goal. On that note, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting. And all votes tonight, by the way, will be roll, have to be roll call votes. I see Tim's hand is raised.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
It is a motion and there's a second to approve. And we'll start with the minutes of March 10th. Is Ian, you're gonna do the roll call? Or should you go?
Here I am.
Roll call vote on March 10th minutes. There's a motion and there's a second.
Mr. Susan.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Lindy.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Columbodas.
Yes.
And Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 16th, our special emergency meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Right, a motion and there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Missed it.
Mr. Columbodas.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Lindy.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
And Mr. Susan.
I wasn't present.
Okay, thank you, you left state. All right, eight in favor, none against.
Announcements from the president. Just, just a quick reminder, next meeting, two weeks from tonight, I'll be appointing the Charter Review Committee. There's still a couple of openings, but I wanted to get them, the people that have signed up appointed. So, next meeting, we will be formally appointing the Charter Review Committee. We do not have any proclamations this evening. Citizens' open forum, are there any citizens that wish to speak during the citizens' open forum portion of this meeting? Anybody at all? I can't see anybody, but is the council clerk? Seeing none?
I do not see any raised hands at this time.
All right, I'll move on. No appointments, no hearings. We have one license transaction this evening. Again, this will require a roll call vote. Petition P 2020-008, new common victors license. Ronald J. Emma doing business as Ronnie Waffles on 1400 Pleasant Street. I refer to the town manager for a brief explanation.
Mr. President, this is a common vic license for Ronnie's Waffles located at the former Bridgewater Savings Bank on Pleasant Street. And there is no objection from, from any of the relevant staff, your relevant staff.
Okay. Are there any questions by the councilors? I'll entertain a motion, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
I'll make a motion to approve for discussion.
I'll second.
There's a motion to approve for discussion and seconded by Councilor George. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, I'd just like to note that Mr. Emma has joined us virtually. Thank you very much, Mr. Emma. We appreciate that. Just in general, as far as these meetings go, I want to do the business of the town and not set policy, but we've got a business that wants to open, so I'm completely in favor of it. And hopefully it can get open sooner rather than later with all this COVID stuff going on. But I'm completely in favor.
Mr. George, anybody else?
Nothing to add.
Is he gonna have blueberry, blueberry waffles? He can't, he's muted, he can't hear. All right, there's a motion and there's a second. No further discussion. This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Susan.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Lindy.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Columbodas.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, thank you very much. Good luck, Ms. Emma, on your new adventure. Presentations, we have no presentations this evening. We'll move on to the town manager's report. Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of items tonight on the agenda, but really first, I just want to thank the, the town council and certainly all the town staff for, for the last few weeks of, of this COVID-19 crisis. And I'm really appreciative of all your efforts. So I, I thank you for all the things that you've done for Bridgewater. And certainly, in terms of staff, it's, it's incredible to see the dedication there to keep the town running. So I appreciate that. And I would be remiss in not recognizing your council clerk, Anne Holmberg, for, for being a driving force behind getting these meetings up and going. She's, she's been incredible and very diligent about making sure we have the safest and most appropriate meeting possible. So, so I certainly want to thank her publicly. I think first, on, on my list was the Mitchell School update, so I'll give you that. The Mitchell School Committee actually met last night, but they heard that the owner's project manager had coordinated the submission of the design development documents to the MSBA. That happened on March 16th. We got some comments back from the MSBA on, on the last day of March. And, and now the district is formulating some responses to those minor, minor comments. So, nothing major on that end. The designer, the architect, RDA, and, and our OPM, and representatives from the school district have been meeting virtually to work out the current, some of the current design issues. They've also been working with the town, specifically conservation, fire department, police, elder affairs, water sewer, engineering, planning, community economic development, to refine the plans. And they've, they've taken some of those items and redesigned minor portions of the plan to accommodate some of those needs. So, so that's all good. The project is obviously still in the early stages, but it's still on time and on budget despite the COVID-19 restraints that, that we've been living with. The demolition of the old school is on schedule and should be out to bid next week. And that will be, if all goes well, that will be awarded by May 19th. The demo is designed to be started and completed during the summer months, so there can be as little impact as possible to, to the traffic in Bridgewater. And so that's designed, the demo will be, should be completed by the end of August.
We lost him. I think we lost his audio. And his, and his video. Give him a second to come back. Tim, Tim?
Wait, that's fine, but you know, at that point, make a motion to take item J out of order and go right to discussions. Well, there's, there's, there's Michael, he's back.
Did he come back? Where'd he go? He's down there now. Okay.
Sorry about that. And I should have prefaced this, I, I've got some home network issues, but hopefully that won't happen again. But I can get back on as quickly as possible. So, as you can see, in any case, the actual construction of the new school, once it begins, should last about 18 months. And the school should be completed in the summer of 2022 and open in September of 2022. Last evening's school committee, school building committee meeting reviewed a lot of the interiors, spaces, the cafeteria, the gym, music maker space, and also the interior finishes. Also looked at the site design and some changes to parking areas. And, and then also reviewed the demo, demolition logistics and the schedule. So as I said, it's on budget. Our reimbursement rate for eligible costs is just under 60%. So it's a couple of points higher than it was, mostly due to some of the incentives that have been built into, into the project. So the meetings used to be held in the council chambers, but the, the building committee meetings are generally held on the second and fourth Mondays of the month. Obviously now virtually. And, and you can get the link on the town's website under the meeting schedules. Next one happens to be April 27th. And the architects are gonna continue their review of the interior finishes and present an updated cost estimate. And, and move on from, from that point. So information, as I've often said, can be found at www.bridgewaterschoolproject.com, bridgewaterschoolproject.com. And anybody looking for more information can, can find it there.
Ian, Council of Fitzgibbons has a question.
Mr. Dunn, you said there'd been some questions back from the school building already about various aspects. This is not unexpected and all built into the timeline. You said everything's on time, so we're still good, right?
Still absolutely good. The, the types of questions that come back have to do with, you know, square footages of, of certain rooms and, and just asking the, the architect to review the need of, you know, the space needs on, on minor, minor issues. So it's all part of the process and won't, won't hamper the timeline, timeline at all.
COVID-19 budget, budget update.
I'm sorry, let me give you a little bit of an update. I think the council probably is pretty aware, but for, for some of the public, not quite so aware. Just in terms of how we've been dealing with this process for the last few weeks, we, we convene an emergency team meeting every morning. We review all of the updates, state orders, interactions with our state agency neighbors, and go over the number of cases that we've seen in the community. So, to that end, right now, we are looking at 15 active cases. Active cases, just so everybody's on the same page, active cases means essentially potentially infectious cases. So if, if somebody has had it, has been, suffered through the, the symptoms and is, has quarantined for, for 14 days, they generally come off of the active list. So, so a few people have come off, five or six have come off, and five or six have, have come on. So we've been at the 15 mark amongst the community for, for a little over a week, probably closer to two weeks now. So, so it's steady. It hasn't climbed.
Lost him again. He's frozen. He's frozen in time now.
Much like Khan Solo.
He says he can get back on quick, so let's give him a minute.
Can I ask a, please, no question?
Here he's back. Yeah, go ahead, Peter. Councilor Columbodas, did you have a question?
Tim was suggesting we go to another agenda item. And can we, is there, can we come back to this one if we've gone to another?
Well, he's back now. He said that if he gets knocked, he might get knocked off at any time.
We never voted on it, Peter.
Can we even do that? If, if we were to go to another item, could we come back to this one?
Yeah, sure can, sure can. So, okay.
If you want, I'll, I'll wrap that up as quickly as I can. So, just generally for town, on the town side, I think everybody knows that all the staff, we've given all the staff the technology to work from home as best we can. And we're reassessing those technology needs currently and, and in order to provide any additional equipment that's needed for the next month or so that we anticipate will be out. Mail and package processing, while challenging, is, is working. We've instituted a quarantine in order to get mail into the right, the hands of the right departments. The collector's office is functioning as normally as possible. We have bills that, that, you know, any bills that people get can be paid online. They can be dropped in the drop box at the side entrance of the academy building at the end of the, the ramp. And they can also be posted through the US mail, so we still get mail delivery. Accounting and bills are paid as normal, as normal as possible. The building office is conducting inspections and issuing permits as normal. And they may be moving to virtual inspections. We'll see what the state, the state guidelines are on that coming up soon. So currently, the library is closed, but the staff is conducting trainings and they're deploying elsewhere as need be. And they'll probably be deployed with other departments that need the extra help during the, the crisis. All recreation fields and golf are closed down, with the exception of the parks, which are open to hikers and walkers, assuming proper social distancing. The veterans' office is closed, but still available by phone for those that need veteran services. Police and fire remain on a normal, relatively normal schedules. Obviously, particularly the fire department has been extremely busy. They're making sure that they test their officers. They've got very strict protocols now in place to, to test prior to, to shift changes. And they've also developed plans for potential alterations to shift schedules to accommodate potential infections within their respective staffs. Command staffs are separating to ensure continuity of operations. And the fire department has added an ambulance and paramedics dedicated specifically to the COVID-19 virus. We continue to decontaminate buildings. Any buildings that have skeleton crews in them or skeleton staff. We also decontaminate vehicles and cars. Water and sewer are operating normally, but with increased protocols, obviously, they are very sensitive. We're very sensitive to the, both water and sewer because of the thin staffing there. So, so we want to make sure that we have plans in place in the event that anybody in those departments becomes infected. Elder Services is not open to the public, but they do continue to provide Meals on Wheels for roughly 60 seniors. Really, we've, we've had tremendous outpouring of volunteer help to make sure that those meals get delivered. And I certainly thank those volunteers. And they're planning now to try to make sure that we, we have some sort of contact with seniors that we know are, are shut in and others that, that really need to be checked on. So the CERT team has been engaged with that as well. They've done the spectacular job reaching out, social distancing, but reaching out to the, to the elder community. So that Meals on Wheels does continue. It's twice a week now, down from five. And we do provide extra meals, obviously, on the limited schedule. So we just, the limited schedule necessitated by the need to make sure that we keep the volunteers safe and also, also keep the, the seniors safe. So in short, it's really focused on continuity of operations, delegation of authority, and, and just good interoperable communications. That's really what it's all about at this point. So that's before I go on to budget. Anybody have any?
We got Councilor George? Councilor George?
Yep, through you to the town manager. Michael, how are we doing on the communications from the Department of Correction?
Great question. That's dramatically better. I won't say we're over communicating, but it's dramatically better. Councilor George references, early on in this crisis, we were, we were not getting frequent updates from the, some of the DOC facilities. That is, that has changed. I think the governor himself intervened on that one to make sure that we were getting proper communication. So, so certainly, we appreciate that. But Chief Levy made it known in no uncertain terms that public safety demanded really good and clear communication there. So that's, that's been.
Great. Thank you.
Council Columbodas, you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question, I missed, through you. Mr. Dunn, is the, the transfer station hours, are they the same? Are they open as ever?
The, yep, the transfer station is open. We're, he's equipped with masks and gloves in the event that that is, he believes that's needed. He's also observing, you know, the social distancing rules that are required. But it's a relatively safe environment, given this particular virus. So trying to maintain a sense of normalcy certainly, but also making sure that, you know, we don't have trash buildup in, in people's houses is kind of important. So we're doing what we can to make sure that that stays open.
Council of Fitzgibbons, do you have a question? Okay, any other questions to the town manager on the COVID-19 before we move on to the budget impact? Budget impact?
So obviously, you can imagine a lot's changed in the few short weeks. So really, all of our revenue assumptions for both this fiscal year, fiscal 20 and fiscal 21, really have to be reworked. And Tony Solomati is, is doing that now. But really, a lot of those numbers depend on, on some of the, the numbers that we need to get over the next several weeks so that we can extrapolate into, you know, more accurate revenue projections. So for example, for 2020, balance of this fiscal year, we will likely see a fairly precipitous drop in, in local receipts. We're gonna see a drop in meals and lodging tax revenue, which will probably virtually disappear for the fourth quarter. Obviously, golf revenues will be dramatically lower. One piece of good news, the Department of Revenue has let us know that there will be no 9C cuts. For those that remember roughly 10 years ago, we, Bridgewater experienced a couple of years of, of 9C cuts, meaning 9C is the section of the law that allows the governor to make unilateral cuts without legislative approval in times, you know, when, when revenues, state revenues don't meet their, their projections. So we have been told, as I say, that that's not going to happen for the balance of this fiscal year, which, which certainly is a relief. However, we have frozen discretionary spending and we've frozen hiring. And we've identified a number of savings opportunities in all the department budgets. And I can tell you that all the departments, department has been great in helping to curb, curb the spending and identify areas that, or, or funding or monies that they don't need to spend under the current circumstances. So, so that's been great. So really, in conjunction with Tony, our, our goal is quite simple. We're, we're doing everything we can to finish the year without any stabilization transfer. We'll have to do some interdepartmental transfers as we normally do at the end of the year, but we are trying very hard to avoid any transfer out of stabilization. And I think, I think we're gonna be able to do that and still provide the critically needed town services. So Tony is working currently quite diligently on a, on a cash flow analysis for the remainder of this year. And as I say, that, that will largely inform FY '21's revenue projections as well. So, for '21, originally, I mean, it's sort of an open book now, unlike a few weeks ago. So originally, Governor Baker indicated that, back in January, that local aid would increase by about 2.8%. We are now anticipating either no increase or a slight reduction in local aid. But we don't know, we don't know that yet, and we certainly don't know what that amount will be. So, so we'll be looking very carefully at, you know, what the DOR and the governor have to say about that. In terms of local receipts, there are, local receipts are sort of the bellwether of the '21 budget projections. And, and so we're looking very carefully at the second motor vehicle commitment, which comes out early next month. And we're also looking at new growth, which will be finalized later this month as well. And finally, we're just keeping very careful tabs on, on projects that, that have come into the pipeline, so to speak. We're just seeing if those projects will actually continue on. And, and we can gauge what our new growth will look like down the line as well, based on that, that project pipeline. So I guess a month ago, I reported a deficit in our '21 budget of roughly 200,000. And, and now that, I wish it was 200,000, but we don't, we don't know exactly what that, what that deficit will look like until we get our hands around the, the, the revenue projections for '21, which are essentially being completely reworked. So I am fairly confident in saying we won't have solid projections for at least four or five weeks. And I'm sure that at the finance and budget and finance committee meeting next week, Tony will dive much further into the numbers. But I'm hoping originally, the, the, well, not originally. Normally, I would be submitting the council a balanced budget right now. But given the, the issues that we obviously have to contend with, I am projecting at the earliest a May 19th submission. So that is what I'm looking at right now in terms of budget. But happy to, happy to answer any questions about, about those 20 or 21.
Council of Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Dunn. It sounds like we're gonna end '20 okay, which is about all we can expect at this point in time. My concern is more for COVID-19. And just setting expectations for everybody. It sounds like the best, best, best possible case would be level services, that we're able to keep everybody employed in the town and everyone that the town, you know, supports, that will be able to keep their jobs. And is, I guess I'll ask a question, is that true? Is that your best case scenario at this point?
I think at this point, based on the, on the little that we really know and, and the, the little that we can assume, I think that would be correct. I think level, a level service right now is about the best we can hope for.
And to be clear about what level service might mean, that would mean dipping substantially into stabilization funds that we've developed over the last few years, just in the event of a situation like this, an, an event where local revenues crash down and, and we have to tide over for a little bit with the stabilization fund that we've built up in the good times. Is that correct?
I think that's absolutely correct. I think that's, Tony Solomati, our finance director, would, would definitely say that now is exactly the time that the stabilization was intended to, to help us get through. We are gonna certainly be extremely, if, if and when we get to the point where we're asking the council to, to dip into the stabilization in order to fund '21's budget, that's certainly gonna be a broad and robust discussion. And, and it'll be quite a judicious request, put it that way.
And as a member of the budget and finance committee, and this is my last question, Mr. President, as a member of the budget and finance committee, I, I'd like to see what the funding means, which means spending the exact same amount of money that we had this year, next year as we did this year, as opposed to level services. What we're going to, in level services, increase spending by contractual arrangement. spending by contractual arrangement. And to really understand what the amount being asked for from stabilization is going to be to get us through this, because I can't see day to day going up quite a bit. And I can't see local receipts going up very much either. Thank you.
I would I would concur with that.
Yeah, well, we're going to have I'll talk to you, Council Fitzgibbons and Council George for a budget and finance committee meeting soon, so we can get a more I know this forum is a good way to get for all of us to get. But I think there's certain things that we that we need to get our hands on. I do think this fiscal year to get through June 30, you're right, we're going to see a decrease in our local receipts. I know a commitment on real estate tax just went out as well. So those are coming in. I don't know what impact the COVID-19 may have on the ability for all those to come through because that's a it's a big piece of our fund. I I don't think there will be any reduction in what the state has promised us for fiscal 21. As a matter of fact, Mr. Dunn, I'm sure that there will be there are some expenses that we're incurring as a result of this COVID-19, particularly on our public safety departments that I'm assuming based on what I hear in the news, that there will be some sort of formula or grant or whatever form you'll have to fill out to get reimbursement for that, whether there'll be any relief for municipalities for the loss of hotel and meals taxes, I'm not sure. But I do think there'll be some reimbursements coming to the town. So there's a big picture here. But right, this does throw throw our our finances and all the finances throughout the state in 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 chaos a little bit, because we've all been going along pretty well these last several years. And we have a lot of plans and we have a lot of projects in the pipeline where we, you know, we knew that something was going to come eventually, but we didn't know it was going to be a virus that did this to us. So yeah, we'll we'll see what happens. Council Colm Bodis, did you have a question?
I did. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Dunn, so obviously, revenues are down. Some costs are up. Are there any costs that are cost other costs that are down? And if we're not providing services, what do we we're still paying staff, right? So we're not
We have
Are there any do we are there any savings, you know, that this health crisis?
At this point, no, we're still we are still we've committed to continuing to pay staff. If this goes on longer than than is currently projected, then we'll we'll be taking a hard look at at our ability to hold on to staff. But we have committed to paying the staff through this time. Staff is almost every well, really, everyone is is doing something. So nobody is getting, you know, nobody is sitting at home with literally nothing to do. And that's part of my charge to the department heads is really make sure that that your folks are engaged and and make sure they've they've got plenty to do. And so all of them are engaged and all of them are doing what they can. And it may be, you know, as I mentioned, some departments that that really are purely customer service that don't that don't that are, you know, the buildings are closed now are looking at
Lost him again. Give him 30 seconds to get back on. He only has one more subject. Because Jay might take a few minutes. We go to Jay. Where do you go? He's back. See, doesn't take him long. You're muted.
But to answer Council Colm Bodis's question, we haven't seen a huge reduction in any particular expense. But what we are doing is is choosing not to spend things that we would have otherwise spent. The only thing I can think of that's probably down is our fuel budget. But that's that's it at this point.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to Memorial Building office space.
All right, let me see if I can actually share my screen with you without my entire home network blowing up. Just a moment. All right, hold on. All right, so
You have an image you want to
Yeah, I got there. We go
There we go.
Should be you should see it now. So obviously, we're talking about, I think the question came up about the use of this building and also, you know, why why we could not use potentially use the highway barn for for sorry. Why would we potentially use the highway barn for DPW services? So let me let me just run through here is here is some detail of the the building when it was in the planning stages back in the 1800s. It was built, obviously, as a library, as built as a Civil War memorial, as you can tell by the plaques in the front of the building. This was this was roughly the the original layout. So what we'd like to do is right here, it preserves and it maintains it actually returns the building back to its it's closer to its original insides to some extent, but it still accommodates the two bathrooms that are required, handicapped accessible. It removes a closet and sink that was added in this area. And it also removes the stairs that were not part of the original structure as well. So as you can see, what's contemplated here, the water and sewer superintendent, DPW director, as well as some meeting space, as well as two staff, and then the town engineer and another staff. So six people tentatively with the ability to expand if necessary. In terms of well, while I'm at it and while I share the screen and while I've got connection, I might as well show you a rendering of the front. So right now, as you know, there are granite steps that lead up to the front door. So this is like a slightly revised revised version of those same granite steps. However, a sloping walkway that begins down down here and goes up into the building, it provides proper accessibility for everybody and and eliminates the need for for a long ramp around the back of the building into the back door or a chairlift at the back entrance, which is not long term is not optimal. So this this design requires no mechanical elevators, lifts, or whatnot, which actually, over the long term, is a significant cost savings. So that that's what the building would look like down here.
Can I just interject for one second?
Sure.
So I assume you need to rebuild that front patio and front steps because that they're not deep enough to accommodate the ramp coming in from the side. Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And it also it also brings it up to the threshold. So there's that once you enter into that little alcove, then there's a step up into the door. So this would bring it flush with that door so that you you could get a wheelchair in. But that's that's correct.
Yeah.
So in any case, this is just sort of the design of the front, which doesn't tell you a whole lot, but the picture really tells you much more. So I think the question was, well, why why are we choosing this building to accommodate? You know, the DPW administrative staff. So the short answer is the highway barn, even though we were able to pack about five or six folks in there. When the academy building was being renovated, it's really not adequate space to accommodate the administrative staff. So the highway barn was built, excuse me, in 9495 timeframe. So it's coming up on 2526 years old. And it also needs a fair amount of capital improvement work to just accommodate the work that that we have going on down there. But when it's properly staffed, the highway offices are going to have to accommodate 15 to 20 employees. We have up to 50 contractors that during the winter plow season that meet down there.
Yeah, lost him again. Give him a second to come back.
Sorry about that. So it's not really an appropriate place to bring the public to.
You're breaking up, Tim. He's back. You're back.
All right, so I'll get through my thing very quickly here. Anyway.
This is something in Falmouth. You gotta unmute yourself.
It defaults to muted. Let me log back on.
Apologies, I'm going to try to dial in with my phone so that so that if this happens again, I can I won't get completely obliterated. So if this happens, I'll dial in. In any case, the little bit of history, we had anticipated putting at least water and sewer in the new water and treatment facility. DEP did not like that idea and was not willing to fund that project if we if we did that. So we dropped that. And and we are planning on using the Memorial Building to house the administrative folks. We're also trying to create at least a semblance of a campus. So you've got somewhat of a one stop shop for town business. If you're the average resident, the average member of the public coming in to look for a permit or what have you, it tries to be a one stop shop. So that's that's sort of basically why why not the the highway barn and why the Memorial Building really is a more appropriate spot. But happy to answer questions about that.
Mr. Colm, Mr. Colm Bodis?
Mr. Dunn, can you be sure to share the the floor plan and the elevation that front elevator or any, you know, any relevant documents? From what I can see from that floor plan, there's really no public use of the entire periphery is it's really lost its, you know, original purpose. And and I'm concerned that we we spend CPA money and other public funds with the understanding with the expectation of one use. And now we're looking at another. And I think there's certainly warrants further discussion. Perhaps, I don't know, we can look at this as a package and, you know, that both the Memorial Building and the Old Town Hall are kind of, you know, ready for reuse. And perhaps if we can make good use of the town hall for public use, that would be somewhat except more acceptable to see this relegated office use. But I think it certainly warrants close to, you know, thorough discussion in the public process to look at the whole thing.
Mr. Lindy, did you or Mr. Souza, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Along with what Peter just said, using the Old Town Hall, if you wish, for those offices, what's happening here is the building was originally set up part as a memorial, a war memorial to our veterans, way back to the Civil War in I. It appears to me that what we've done is said, we have a plaque on the foyer. That's good enough. Forget you guys. Go over to common and see the other plaque we have. You're not going to have a building to display any of your artifacts. You're not going to have a builder to really do anything as far as a war memorial really goes in Bridgewater. We're just not interested. Is that what's happening?
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments on that? Remember, the items for the next town, next council meeting, which is two weeks from tonight, April 21, and we will probably do it the same format on the Zoom. Please let in know of any items you want on the town manager's report for discussion. And we will have them. We're all set with that. We're going to move on to discussion items. I have annual town election on here. We have a few things to discuss tonight. The first thing I want to talk about is I have District 5 and 6 Council status. Obviously, Councilor District 3 should be on here as well. That's just a little error. But I confirmed with the town attorney that if we vote later on in the evening to change, to vote the warrant to move the town election to June 27, that the terms for District 3, 5, and 6 extend to that day. So those that are up for election, their term is not over. Their term is extended until that day, June 27. And if you're reelected, then you're back. So I wanted to put that out there. I know the the town clerk is on the line. I will ask her to speak on the annual town election as well because we had a little Zoom conference meeting yesterday. It was kind of her her wishes to adjust the time of the election, the voting of the election on June 27. I'll just refer to the town clerk to explain a little bit, Mr. Fitzgibbons. You're muted, Tim. You're muted. Yeah.
Sorry, allow the town clerk to speak at this time?
Is there a second? There's a second. This does does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colm Bodis?
Did we lose him? He's muted. He's muted. He's there. I see him. You're muted. Say yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against?
Okay, I'll just I'll refer to the town clerk. Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, all of you. Seems like we spend a lot of time on the computer lately, which is a really good thing. It's an important thing. I am here to ask you to consider reducing the hours. Is there feedback on your side?
Yep.
What can I do to stop that?
Nothing, just keep talking.
Yeah.
It's not that bad.
It isn't. Okay, it's aggravating on my side, but it's okay.
Can you lower if you lower your speaker, you get less feedback?
Let me try, see if this. Is that better?
It is.
Does that sound better? You can still hear me, though?
Yep.
Okay, I don't want to whisper you to death. So yes, I am asking you for a reduction of hours for the election. There is no standard mandate for what the hours must be, except that they need to be four. We need to have four hours for the election. As you know, our elections run from seven in the morning till eight at night. The election workers are there by six. Jolene, you're usually there at least that early, if not earlier. And. Once the election closes down, it takes us at least a half an hour. For a little election like this, it'll probably take us about half an hour. To clear everything up and then go back to the office and enter all the data. So it's, you know, at least another hour, hour and a half after eight o'clock. Which is a really long time for what I think is going to be. A relatively small election. Our town elections have been getting progressively smaller. The other thing that we're going to be doing, we have permission to extend early voting by mail. To any citizen who wants it. And we also, the restrictions on absentee ballots have been greatly reduced. So that if you have COVID nineteen, or if you are in fear of COVID nineteen, you can have an absentee ballot. So basically, there are no restrictions on absentee ballots. There are no restrictions on early vote by mail ballots. And because I don't even know what our situation will be as far as social distancing by June twenty-seven. I plan to really promote the vote by mail. Yeah, on every four format I can find or every platform I can find to promote it. And I would want to offer to all councillors the ability to have application forms for the absentee and for the early vote mail-in ballots. So that you could distribute those within your within your precincts. If that's what you want to do, if you could find a safe way to to put them out. They're quarantined now and in the office, so they're safe. But after they get handled by a couple people, you know, I'm not really sure how you want to handle that, but I can certainly make them available. The applications are also available online or by phone. We can send them out to people and we're already. Getting applications and where we've got. Plenty of absentee ballots already requested. So as soon as we know what the dates are going to be and what the time is going to be, we'll get the ballots printed. And get them available to people. So basically, they'll have about two months to do absentee voting. My suggestion for the time reduction would be to do it from ten to four, when those are the highest voting hours. And you might think, we tend to think, oh, well, a lot of people vote early and a lot of people vote after work. And so those are high-volume times. They are indeed for our Tuesday elections. Those are very high-volume times. Those are not for our Saturday elections. People don't get out early on Saturday morning and come before they kind of come. Doing business downtown when they're doing their banking or when their kids are getting done with sports games and that sort of thing. Our highest volume time is usually like ten, ten to twelve. We don't have that after-work rush of people coming in between five and seven. As a matter of fact, I would say after after five. We have hardly anything that happens before eight o'clock. So those are, that's some of some of my rationale behind it. Also, just. The real practicality. Of the workers who come in. This is going to be the Saturday exactly one week before Fourth of July. This is going to be a summer Saturday. And people come in, like I say, they're there about six o'clock, six-thirty. They're going to be there until eight thirty. They bring their books, they bring their knitting. They try to stay happy and enthusiastic, but it is a long, gruesome day when you're turning out five hundred voters. And and we get criticized. When people come in, if they see the poll workers knitting or reading a book. People say, what are you doing on our, you know, on our tax dollars? You're sitting here reading, you're sitting here knitting. You know, it's not. Not everybody is just willing to death to be paying the workers to sit there. And I have a legal mandate for the number of workers that I have to have. In each precinct and on each ballot box. I can't just randomly decide that we won't have the staff that we need to have. We also serve muffins for breakfast and and a pretty nice lunch. I would figure if we were doing from ten to two, I wouldn't really be responsible for either of those things. People could eat breakfast before they come in. They can eat. Lunch after they get done or bring a sandwich with them because it'll probably even be quiet enough for them to eat. But some of those things would allow me to save some of this money. We've been talking about the revenue. I really have no place in my office to cut back on expenses. Everything we do. Every every penny we have is really there for some purpose. And if I do ten to four, I can save about eight thousand dollars out of our budget, which is. Which is pretty substantial for what our office would have to offer. And I'd like to keep my poll workers. Happy and wanting to come back. That's one of the reasons I try to make it a good experience for them. In November, I'm going to need every single poll worker I can get to come back for the general election. And to have them feeling like that the last feeling is losing one of their first summer weekends to sitting there for thirteen or fourteen hours. Doesn't leave them in the happiest attitude. So those are, those are my reasons. It's up to you. You can do what you want. It's in the admin code that it has to be the hours that it has to be. So it'd be. You'd have to make some legal machinations to change it.
Councillor Lindy, did you have a question? Councillor Lindy?
Yes, I just want to make, yes, I just want to make sure that I heard correctly. Merrily, you said ten to four?
Ten to four is my recommendation. I mean, I think those are our highest volume hours. But, you know, certainly.
Okay, thank.
Pick something different if you want to. It's up to you.
No, thank you. I just, I I heard you mention ten to two.
Yeah, that was my suggestion.
Councillor Fitzgibbons?
Yes, Mr. Dunn, thank you for coming, first of all, and virtually anyway.
I didn't go far.
We have to coordinate this election with Rainham because there's. Joint seats for the Bridgewater Rainham School Committee. And it's my understanding that. You and your office and the town manager and his office have worked with Rainham to come up with the date of June twenty-seventh. And that was acceptable to you, right?
Yes. Yes, that was our suggestion, actually, to them, Rainham. We've talked with the Rainham Town Clerk and she had said to us, they were kind of looking to Bridgewater to say what what Bridgewater wanted and. They thought they'd go along. She thought their selectmen would go along with it. I will say, we always have to coordinate the day with Rainham. We have never coordinated hours with Rainham. Their hours are set. They don't start till ten in the morning. So we've never coordinated hours with them.
Yeah, no, I'm, yeah. So I appreciate all the work behind the scenes to get to this point, to get to the date. You know, traditionally, this council has been. Opposed to. Limiting voting hours. However, I think, you know, under, given the extraordinary circumstances we're facing, I think. We can do ten to four this year. You know, try to keep everybody, who knows where we're going to be with this virus. Try to keep everybody safe. Try to keep everybody get through all your mail-in options, early voting, et cetera. Get people to vote. Not even at the school, I think would be a great thing. So I'm I'm in favor of this when it comes up, but thank you for coming in.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments about this? We can bring this up again when we get to item. Here, when we get to the petition on the. On the election warrant, if somebody wants to make the motion, then we can then we'll have a continue the discussion then as well, because I have my thoughts. Also, under B, I have. I think seven thirty works fine, but I just wanted to put that on there to see if there was any interest. Since it seems like everybody is at home, right now, anyway. If there's any interest in moving the meeting to six thirty or seven o'clock, or we can leave it at seven thirty. We're just April twenty-first, or while we're doing it through Zoom, if it's easier for people to meet earlier. Tim, Councillor Fitzgibbons?
I'm in favor of whatever we want to go with. I just think we need to publicize it and make sure folks know what's going to be happening.
Right. So I think I'd like to make a entertain a motion to move April twenty-first meeting to seven PM versus seven thirty.
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, this does require a roll call vote and any discussion, first of all, seven PM on April twenty-first. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Yep. I I know that night, we do have a couple of public hearings which start. Right after seven thirty, so that'll give us time to get through a lot of stuff before the public hearings. Okay, so this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
And nine in favor, none against?
So our our next meeting will be at seven PM on the twenty-first. I'm sure we'll get a Zoom link for that one as well. Committee reports, I don't see anything under committee reports, legislation for action. Ordinance FY twenty zero zero two, general ordinance, dumpsters in residential zoning districts. This measure was supported by the. Community and Economic Development Committee, and it was discussed prior. To sponsorship. This measure has been duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website, therefore may be finally considered this evening. Is there a motion? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Motion to continue, twenty-one.
There's a motion to continue this till April twenty-first. Any discussion on the motion? And there's a second. I see no hands. This does require a roll call vote to continue this to April twenty-first.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Loesch, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against?
Okay, petition P two zero two zero zero one one, annual town election warrant. The date changed to June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. We have a petition. That on March twenty-third, twenty twenty, the governor signed the Senate Bill two six zero eight, an act granting authority. To postpone twenty twenty municipal elections in the Commonwealth and increasing voter options. In response to declaration of emergency. To respond to COVID nineteen into law. The. Our our normal town election would have been Saturday, April twenty-fifth. This will move our annual town election. To Saturday, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. The town clerk in concert with the town manager and the and the town of Rainham has recommended postponing the town election. To June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. So I'll entertain a motion to move the town election to June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty.
Moved.
So, second.
Okay, there's a motion and there's a second. Any discussion on the motion? This does require a roll call vote.
So. Mr. President. Obviously, this changes the date. Where do we go with the discussion around potentially changing the time?
I'll refer to the town attorney for that one because I think that does require a special piece of legislation.
So I I think the warrant has to specify the time. So before you vote the warrant, which I believe is what's before you right now. I believe what you should do is figure out if you do want to change the time. If indeed you do. We're running a tight window for when the next meeting is. So you would have to put it on as an emergency measure at the next meeting. Vote the time change first, issue and then vote the warrant thereafter with the new time and new date. So you'd have to continue this in essence till the next hearing day. And then you would have to vote the emergency as it relates to an ordinance changing. What is stated in the code, which is an ordinance, and it basically says it has to run from seven to eight o'clock at night. So. Two things would have to happen. You'd have to continue the night. You'd have to continue the vote and the warrant. Then at the next meeting, you would vote the, you'd have to have an emergency. Matter before you relative to an ordinance changing for one time the time period of the election. Then if that voted in affirmative, you would vote the warrant with the new time. If that was voted down, you would vote the warrant with the current town code time. Does that make sense?
No, no, it does. And I think. Conceptually, from what the town clerk said, it does make sense. I don't want to belabor this, but I I would like to continue this. To be able to look at modifying the times for obvious reasons, but also to give it a little bit of time if we do get some pushback in regards to people not thinking it's a good idea. That that would be my position.
And I'll withdraw my motion.
Mr. Lind, Mr. Lindy?
Do they absolutely have to be done together? I don't understand. People want to know when the election is and it's pretty difficult. If we wait some more.
I think procedurally, from what. Yes, they have, they have to be done together because the warrant that you vote has to have the time to give notice to people as to when they can vote. So if your warrant doesn't have a time on it, you're not giving proper notice to people voting. So you can't vote a blank warrant. So, yeah, they do have to, you do have to know the time in order to vote the warrant.
Okay, so so Attorney Rollins, the current. Petition doesn't have the time on it, but the the warrant that we'll, we would sign does because what I have in front of me does not have the time on it.
That's right, yes.
All right.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Just a quick question for Attorney Rollins because we may have to meet sooner than the twenty-first, according to my calculations. Will the, will an emergency declaration allow us to postpone an election four days before the election?
Yes, based on the new law, you can postpone an election up till the day before the election. One of the newly adopted pieces of legislation. So, yeah, we'll be fine timing-wise, and I think it would be appropriate as an emergency measure in this context. So I think we'd be good procedurally as well.
Okay, so. And I don't want to. I don't want to take any straw votes or anything like that, but I get the strong feeling and success of the council that we want to. Move to June twenty-seventh and we want to reduce hours and that. That could be communicated out as the sense of the council that no votes were taken or anything. And that it'll be taken up on. Our next meeting, April twenty-first. To get to Mr. Lindy's point, people want to know when they have to vote and when they'll be able to.
Absolutely, that makes sense.
So again, Mr. President, I'll withdraw my motion and make a motion to continue this till our next meeting.
Second.
If any discussion on on the motion to continue this to. April twenty-first, any discussion on that? I just want to chime in because I'm against it. I do not think we need to change the times. I do not think we need to delay this. We're complicating something at a late hour. I think that we have a contested race here in Bridgewater, and I think it's important to keep the hours. That we normally have according to our charter as is. I understand and respect the the town clerk's wishes, and we've had these discussions before in our town election. We don't have large turnouts. So we always look to try to reduce the hours. So I'll be voting against this. Motion to move this to April twenty-first. I may be in the minority here, but I think we need to allow. If anything, I would, I would probably support having the same hours as Rainham does, which is ten AM to eight PM. Since we made the most, since we're moving the date to coincide with Rainham, you might as well have the hours to be with Rainham, but. I think that. But I think that, you know, the Secretary of State has even advised municipalities that, you know, condensing hours is, now you've got more people voting in a shorter window than giving the full day of a vote, voting hours would normally be. So that's just my take on this. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I respect your views on that. I think tonight's not the night to necessarily have that debate. We, if, among those people who want to perhaps change hours, we'd be doing it backwards, according to the town attorney, to vote the warrant tonight and not vote, and not vote hours when we don't have anything in front of us. So if we just move it to the 21st, we can have the discussion on the 21st. And I'm willing to hear anybody on the council or anyone who wants to call in through Zoom or email me or any of us about what they think the hours should be and certainly hear from them. But let's just move, let's just move the discussion to weeks.
Well, it's up to us to set the date and it's up to us to set the hours upon, in recommendation from the town clerk. So I, certainly you'll probably see a lot of several people at the open forum or at the end of this meeting chime in on this, I'm not sure. But if we just voted this in tonight, it's over. We have our election June 27th and we keep the hours as we normally do. Mr. Lind, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, just a point of information. If we did vote it tonight with the hours that we always have, could we, on the 21st, reconsider the time period?
I don't know.
No, no, because you're going to vote the warrant tonight, which is the official document that's going to be signed by you all and put up for the election. So if you want to make changes to the warrant, the changes have to be done prior to your signing of the warrant, which is why I'm advising, if that's something you all are contemplating, this is the way to do it. Certainly you can get out the information you think, you know, it may get moved to June 27th. But I would not sign the warrant and then have an emergency measure that changes that warrant, in particular when we're contemplating how we address that right now. So no, I would not do that.
Mr. Columbotus?
In order to, we have a more informed debate whenever we do. Perhaps I could ask a point of information from Ms. Hunt. Mrs. Hunt, what numbers have there been? You said numbers have been down in participation at spring elections. Can you run down, do you know, do you have those numbers handy?
Yep, I do, for sure. In 2016, we had 406 people come. And 2017, was the last time we had a competitive race for town council, we had 785 people come. In 18, we had 512 people come. And last year, we had 5% of the voters at 835 people. And that was, there were, they were competing, there was a competitive race for the library trustees.
And how many competitive races are there on this year's ballot?
One, one and, one and no people running in few places.
Mrs. Hunt, wasn't there a charted question on the 18?
On the 18 one?
Was 19?
No, the 19, on the 19 one, yes.
That's when we had 800.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, and that's, right.
I mean, if, just as a point, we see drop offs in every other sector of public life. And I imagine it'll last for a couple of months. I think these hours are completely appropriate, but we'll talk about it. So I'm in favor of the motion to continue this, consideration of this until the April date.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, there is a motion to continue petition P 2020011 on April 21st. This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Susan.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
No.
Mr. Lindy.
No.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
No.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Six in favor, three against.
Now, before moving on, Dennis, quickly.
Yeah.
If it is the intention to have a debate and a discussion, I would advise strongly that someone bring forward an emergency measure. Obviously have it placed before the vote on the warrant at the next meeting. All right, just procedurally, that makes the most sense. And if it gets voted down, then you vote the warrant. If it succeeds, then you vote the warrant. But do it in that order and whoever wants to bring that forward, it's fine. But I would do it in that manner.
I'll sponsor, I'll sponsor that, but I'll have the town attorney write it.
You can't see me or what I'm doing right now.
You're number one too, Mr. Rollins.
Okay, so we'll, someone will sponsor that ordinance for the next meeting. Anything else on that? Old business is none, new business. We have order FY 20048, acceptance of a gift, Howard Foundation for the Council on Aging. I'll refer to the town manager on that.
Gift, obviously from that, this is a gift from the Howard Foundation and it's one that we've received for several years now. Certainly we're appreciative of it. It's $10,000 from the home prided man.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Second.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee. This does require a roll call vote. Any discussion? This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
She's muted.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, order FY 20049, acceptance of a gift, Council on Aging. I'll refer to the town manager for this.
Mr. President, also, this, in this case, an anonymous gift of $10,000 unrestricted to be expended by the Office of Elder Affairs.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Second.
The motion is a second to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee. Any discussion on referring it out? Seeing none, that does, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Susan.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Lindy.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
We have order FY 2050, Home Rule Petition. The town of Bridgewater Charter membered, sponsored by Council Loesch. This is a petition to amend the town term limits. I guess if, we'll refer it out tonight? Or did you want to comment on this briefly, Council Loesch? Or just refer it out?
I'm happy to comment, just to give some context on it and where it came from. We have potentially other counselors that would be running into the same situation that we currently have in District 6. So to help clarify what the charter is saying, I'm looking to remove one word. And as the Charter Review Committee comes back, they can have their updates and their recommendations for us to put back into a town election. But this is something that I think will help clarify things as we go forward, potentially. So I'm happy to hear back from whichever committee gets referred to, have them look at it, but just definitely wanted to start the conversation to potentially have some resolution on this.
Motion to refer to the Rules and Procedures Committee?
Second.
There's a motion to refer to Rules and Procedures and there's a second. Any discussion on referring it to Rules and Procedures? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Matt, you're muted, Matt.
Sorry about that, yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Lindy.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Susan.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, that ends our normal business. Are there any citizens online tonight that would like to speak during the citizens' comments portion of our meeting? I can't see if anybody's hand is raised.
No, I'm not, I'm not seeing any raised hands.
No citizens' comments tonight from anybody? Okay, we'll move on to council comments. I'll start as I visualize us sitting at our desks. And I'll start on my far right with Council Susan.
Thank you. With the crisis that we're all in right now, I really like to thank all our first responders. We've always had great pride in the work that our Fire and Police Department do. But under these crises, they're stepping beyond their normal activities. They're putting their lives, their family and everyone around them at risk when they handle a person with the virus. So we really want to thank them and hope that they stay safe and God take care of them. Thank you.
Council Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I would just like to echo that sentiment, but also to comment that I know that a number of people in town have offered to and have in fact produced masks to be made available to either responders or nurses and doctors. And my wife is a nurse and I know that she has received some masks from people here in town and it's very much appreciated. And I think it's certainly an endeavor that anyone so willing should undertake in a time like this. And thank you very much.
Council Lindy?
Well, first of all, it's nice to see different faces. It's nice to see all of you. I wish we were in person, but time will tell. I wanted to definitely thank the people that made those masks. I think it's just an amazing gesture here in town. And I was lucky enough, I have some health issues and I was able to get a couple myself, so I can actually go to the grocery store. The police and fire above and beyond and the town employees and the town manager. Just want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart because it's hard to perform everyday duties under trying circumstances. And I just want you to all know you're appreciated. Thank you.
Council George?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to echo what's already been said by Councilor Susan, Councilor Chase. I just want to add one quick thing that I think over the last few weeks, one of the things that has really jumped out at me is neighbors helping neighbors. And, you know, from people making masks for other people, people volunteering to go to the store for people that can't go in, taking trash, cleaning yards. It's just, it really does remind us all that, you know, in this large, large world, when, when you really have to count on people, it's your neighbors that are going to step up. So I hope that we continue to see that. And, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll come out of this a lot stronger than when we went into it. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Rushton, Council Rushton?
Thank you. If I could just add tonight, I guess I would first start and say, Mr. Dutton and his team and town employees have done an incredible job keeping us up to date and keeping the town informed on the website, on Facebook, and us as counselors. It's extremely stressful time and I appreciate all the town employees and the things that they've done to keep the town operating the way it has. Certainly, in particular, to Council Susan's comments earlier, public safety staff. Certainly our Fire Department has gone above and beyond, literally, having to put their hands on patients in transport, you know, really maximizing the risk to them and to their family and other things that people may not recognize, such as the CERT volunteer who have continued literally personally shopping for some of our seniors in housing. Just so many people have done an incredible job over the last month and the foreseeable future. So I want to just put a shout out to them and appreciate all of their efforts. I also wanted to thank publicly the president of Bridgewater State University, who offered up housing for our public safety staff, should they choose to do that. They've been a good partner, providing some PPE, when they were initially very difficult to get hands on in town before MEMA started distributing. So thank you to everybody and everybody just be safe.
Thank you, Councilor Loesch.
Yes, I'd like to echo all of those sentiments and, you know, public safety, the town manager's office, all our town employees who've made this transition to working from home. I know it's new for many of you, so I appreciate you taking it all in stride. I'd like to also thank the Bridgewater Rainham School District. I have my kindergartner on a Google Classroom and on ST Math and he's doing all the things, even though he's a little bit sad that his two week recess has now come to an end. But I appreciate all that, you know, everyone in town has done to make this work. It's not ideal, but those of you all who are staying home and doing the best you can, we appreciate it and then hopefully we'll be back out by the 4th.
Okay, Council Columbotus?
Yeah, it's funny, I don't often find myself wanting to quote the Queen of England, but I was struck by parts of her speech in which she, let me just read it and we can kind of describe it to Bridgewater. "I hope in the years to come, everyone will be able to take pride in how they responded to this challenge. And those who come up, who come after us will say the Bridgewater rights of this generation were as strong as any, that the attributes of self-discipline, of quiet, good-humored resolve and of fellow feeling still characterize this town. The pride in who we are is not part of our past, it finds our present and our future." So I've been heartened to see that that really holds true to Bridgewater, what I've seen around town, that sometimes it's crisis that really kind of needs to happen for us to show our two colors and who we are. And I've been really heartened by that. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, I think everybody hit on a lot of my points. So I'll just quote, I think, all of our good friend Keith Beal. "We can, we can get through this as a town, as a state, as a country and we'll be fine." I also want to thank you, Mr. Gallagher, for running a great meeting tonight. It's a challenge to do that and I think it came off very well. And finally, just on a personal note, I've been out driving around through the town a little bit. Anyone who's driving around, be aware of little kids on bicycles. They're getting out on their bicycles a lot more than they have in the past. And you see them all over the streets these days. So drive slowly, assume that there's a kid around the corner on a bike who's just about to come out and run into your car. So be safe, thank you.
Thank you. And on a final note, I just have a couple of comments tonight. And that is what all my colleagues have said, have said earlier. You know, this has been a very trying time for all of us. We're in the middle of this. We have several more weeks to go before we see any changes in the social distancing and everything else. But I do want to echo what Council Rushton said and I do appreciate the town manager keeping us all up to date on this particular issue because I know it's been a very big strain on, on his staff and in all the public safety, police, fire, health, the health board, everybody in town. Everyone that works for the town, it's been, it's been a lot on them. It is a lot on them and will continue to be a lot on them. So I appreciate and applaud the efforts that our town manager and his staff has done through, through all this, with exception of his Wi-Fi issues tonight. But, but I, I think that the updates we're getting has been great. And even our governor has given us daily updates on what's happening throughout the state, which has also been a tremendous, tremendous asset to. which has also been a tremendous tremendous asset to keeping us up to date on what's going on. And hopefully, hopefully, by the time we vote on June 27th, whether it's at 7:00 a.m. or 2:00 p.m., that we will pretty much be through this, hopefully. As as the saying goes, we are all in this together, and we need to remember that. And also, we also need to get out there and help support our local businesses, particularly our local food establishments in town that are struggling as they cannot open to the public. So I'll be ordering some pizza this Friday night. I don't know exactly where yet. But whatever you can do to get out there to support our local businesses, restaurants in town, please do that because they are hurting, and a lot of them really need our our help and support. So on that note, we do not have an executive session on Zoom tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well moved.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second to adjourn. Any discussion? This does require a roll call vote.
All right, Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Colombotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
April 21st at 7:00 p.m.
Take care, everybody.
Be safe.
Take care, everybody.
Get out there on your walks and pick up that trash on the side of the road.